Eureka, are you still there?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. I did want you to go ahead and begin.
Okay.
Um, my screen was doing something crazy, so I wasn't sure what was happening. Okay. So. Where's, it closed all the tabs. Okay, hold on. Minimize. My sexual health logging. All right, um, unit nine, fire away.
Right. We are born into relationship, relationships. All infants have caretakers and as children and adolescents, we have relationships with adults and peers. Adult relationships can take on many dimensions by providing us support, addressing many personal needs for ourself and others, and using available resources. It is said that no one is an island. We cannot exist alone. We must exist in relation to others, even if only indirectly. Many therapists who specialize in couples and sex therapy tend to take what is called a systems approach to their clients. In this approach, individual is looked at in the context of the relationship rather than as a single entity. This form of therapy tends to be more successful than focusing on individual problems without taking the couple into consideration, particularly if the problem applies to the couple such as in treatment for sexual problems. Characteristics of healthy relationships. Some people believe that we experience life most directly and perhaps spiritually through our interactions with other people. A great deal of how we experience life is connected to the relationship we have in our life. Having good friendship and positive relationship with those considered to be family is beneficial for many reasons. Social, social support and a network of intimates help us live longer and happier. Being able to be ourselves with others is a key reward of friendship. Being connected to people in positive ways creates what is called social capital. Just the status of being in relationship with family members, partners, friends, coworkers, and neighbors makes us feel generally happier and healthier. This is a lucky thing since we are literally born into relationships. Researchers McDonald and Mayer published a study in. Directly from those involved in the relationships about the backstory and how it's really working for them. We are left with only our impressions of how well it represents a successful relationship which works for everyone. With the large rate of divorce in the United States, it is common to observe relationships dissolve and sometimes being a part of the dissolution of those relationships can have a negative impact on future relationship formation. Additionally, media images and other forms of popular culture can be unhelpful teachers about how be about how be successful in relationship since many portrayals are unrealistic, biased, or distorted. Certainly, many TV exceptions present several models of different kinds of healthy relationships. They range in style and form just as they do in real life. Meeting needs in relationships. Throughout our lives, we all have needs that are addressed through our important relationships. Examples of these needs are identified in David Richo's book, How to Be an Adult in Relationships, and include attention, which is to have an engaged focus on you that is respectful and sensitive to your needs. This creates an ever increasing, increasing space of trust and safety. Acceptance and unconditional validation of your choice and lifestyle to be embraced as worthy, trusted, understood, and truly approved of in your uniquely uniqueness. Appreciation is expressions of acknowledgement and gratitude of foster feelings of closeness. Aim for a ratio of five appreciations for each compliment you voice in your relationship. Affection. To be loved unconditionally all of the time and like most of the time. Love is uniquely experienced by each person and is both physical and emotional. Allowing heartfelt permission to be yourself. This allows the expression of one's deepest needs and wishes and encourages passion and aliveness. Our earliest childhood relationships with our parents or other caretakers provides our first experience with having these needs addressed. Opportunity for needs to be met continue our whole life. It is never too late in life to address any of these needs and they continue to be present during our life. See David Richo's How to Be an Adult in Relationships for more information. Emotional intimacy and shared feelings of love enrich our lives. A great deal of research has been conducted on this, but the pioneering research in the development of a theory of emotional intimacy and love was Robert Sternberg in nineteen eighty-six where he came up with what was coined the triangular theory of love. This theory describes relationship as being made up of in varying degrees for different people, the following three components. Passion refers to the drive that lead to romantic feelings, physical attraction, and sexual interactions. Passion can be benefit to self-esteem and provide a feeling of affiliation with other and self-actualization. Intimacy refers to feelings of being close and connected to other, to another or others in loving ways. Intimacy in a close relationship is characterized by shared high regard, understanding, and emotional support. Commitment refers to deciding to have and maintain love for another or others. Commitment can be short or long term. What makes relationships?
Eureka.
Yes.
Could you do me a favor and look under participants and change me back to the host?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I, I gave it to you and I can't take it back by myself.
Make, I just wanna say, how do I do that?
Well, so you can go to participant. Thank you. Okay. I apologize. That way I can screen share again. Okay.
Okay. I was wondering, I was like, okay. Um, what makes relationships work? By analyzing successful, healthy relationships, we can learn about what makes love relationships work. Researcher John Gottman has identified seven principles that can revive and strengthen those relationships. They are enhance your love maps, make a point to know about your partner's life. Storing and updating information about important events, ideas, and feelings in regards to your partner creates this love map. A term first coined by researcher Dr. John Money. The data can be as simple as how your partner likes their coffee or knowing which shows to record on TV for them or how the day has gone just by a look. Only by knowing someone can we really love them. Nurture your fondness and admiration. Feelings of honor and respect are crucial elements of long-lasting romance and love. Think and talk about positive feelings for your partner. Each day, try to identify at least one thing that you are grateful to your partner for. Turn towards each other instead of away. Try to stay connected with your partner by letting him or her know that they are valued in small ways. Use mundane ways to connect each day. If you check out of the relationship and stop putting the work in, try to get back on track to stay committed to your growth together. Let your partner influence you. Try to include your partner in your decision-making. Traditional gender roles discourage men from being open to influence from women. Patriarchal patriarchal or traditional leadership styles that value male decision-making can be, can make this especially challenging for some men. Solve your solvable problems. Address conflict effectively using these steps. Raise issues gently, de-escalate tension to diffuse arguments, calm yourself and each other, compromise, tolerate each other's fault, overcome gridlock if problems can't be solved or are ongoing as some are. Keep in dialogue about them, accept the differences that exist between you, so they are not a source of pain. Create shared meaning. Build a culture in your relationship that honors and honors the other's dream, even if you don't share the dream. These principles have often been very effective at helping couples cope with problems in their relationship. However, their core friendship is more important to their relationship's success overall. According to this viewpoint, this friendship is the aspect of their relationship that exists for the couple when they are not fighting and is what really matters. It is essential that they like and respect each other. Jealousy in a relationship can serve as a helpful marker of boundaries. By experiencing feelings of jealousy and sharing those feelings with your partner, both can achieve greater awareness, understanding, and agreement about where the lines are drawn. Demonstrations of jealousy can bolster self-esteem and affirm feelings of desirability in relationships. Sometimes if a partner becomes jealous, the jealousy is taken as a sign of love according to Sullivan in a rating in nineteen ninety-one. But other research has found that jealousy may be more accurately indicating insecurity or immaturity than love according to Pistol nineteen ninety-five. Jealousy can also be based on unfounded insecurity and can potentially be an indication of an abusive relationship. Feeling jealous is natural if however jealous feelings are expressed though anger through anger, threats, or disrespect. This could be an indication of potential danger. It is important to remember that jealousy does not prove the existence of love. It can be painful and can either destroy or cement a relationship. Communication, communicating about the threshold of healthy jealousy in a relationship can be crucial in maintaining a healthy relationship. However, if jealousy is well-founded, the relationship may need to be modified or ended and jealousy can act as a catalyst for that change. Extra relational affairs and relationships can be among the greatest threat to an exclusive relationship or marriage. Some research suggests that just over twenty percent of women and thirty percent of men report being sexually unfaithful to a romantic partner at least once. Earlier studies by researchers such as Witterman nineteen ninety-seven reportedly found that men engage in infidelity more than women. However, more recent research suggests, seems to suggest that the gender gap is narrowing. Barter and kind two thousand and five. And when transgressions other than intercourse, um, example, emotional connection, kissing, etc., are taken into account. Women report as many acts of infidelity as men according to Treusen, Jaisen, and two thousand. While the majority of married people do not have sex outside their marriage, research is fairly consistent in finding that about twenty to forty percent of women and men do. People can address lots of unmet need, unmet needs in addition to sex through an affair, including needs for affection, recognition, and self-worth as well as to banish loneliness. Relationship and communication. Communication is inherent in all interactions all the time. We cannot not communicate when we are with another person. Even a blank stare and silence communicates something. We are constantly sharing verbal and non-verbal cues that usually create meaning for others. These cues include facial expression, movement, gesture, touch, tone of voice, word choice, metaphors, silence. It is helpful to examine these channels of communication in order to understand how we use each of them and to better understand how those around us use them. The relationship we have with someone affects how and what we communicate with them. Generally, when we want others to like or accept us, we stress the aspect of ourselves that we believe they will approve of most. We try to not disclose aspects of who we are that might threaten their positive feelings about us. As we trust another person more, we feel the safety of being able to disclose more of who we are. Our roles instead of in a relationship may also impact our communication. We communicate differently with our parents, siblings, or children than we do our significant others. And we talk about different topics too. Sometimes people in close or long-term relationships, even as coworkers, friends, or colleagues can develop a shared language and inside jokes that further strengthen their relationship. Regardless of the strength of communication, it is a transactional process that involves conveying symbols, words, gestures, or movements. There are three primary contexts of communication: cultural, social, and psychological. The cultural context is the language, values, beliefs, and customs in which communication takes place. The social context in the roles that we play in society and how that may impact our communication with people. The psychological context is how people may communicate with each other differently based on their personalities. It seems obvious to say that our communication affects your relationships. We are always communicating when in the presence of others and we have a rapidly increasing ability to communicate with those who are not present with us using a variety of maladies. Am I saying that right? My, my. What we say and how we say it is a representation of who we are. It is through our interaction and communication that we experience our relationships. We choose the tone, pace, and words we use, which influences how the relationship is experienced. Self-esteem can be greatly impacted by positive or negative talk from oneself or others. Allowing someone to denigrate you with name-calling and hostile threats is emotional abuse and can be very hurtful. Alternatively, bonds are strengthened when we use opportunities for connection during everyday mundane tasks and events. This is true in romantic relationships as well as with family and friends. From our first interactions, we, when we met someone, we may begin to get a feel or potential or noticeable attraction in their direction. In early interactions with potential partners, it is important to not be too threatening by being too overtly sexual or disclosing too much private information right away. As we initiate relationships, we tend to put forward and highlight our best characteristics. Those we think the other person will like and downplay those we expect will be our least admirable attributes. Likewise, we see and focus on the positive attributes in those we like or feel attracted to. This is called the halo effect. Communicating about sexuality is, is essential in new relationships before initiation of sexual interactions that might pose risk for infection or pregnancy. Typically, many aspects of our holistic sexuality, including recent partners and any relevant medical issues, will come up as people move in their relationship from emotional intimacy to perhaps include sexual behaviors in their interactions. Knowing, asking for what we need and what in our sexual interaction will help assure we get it. It is important to recognize that people aren't mind readers, so communication is necessary, even when it comes to sex. Don't let concerns about differences in values, privacy, intrusions, or not knowing what language to use stop you from trying to discuss sexuality with your partner or partners. Let your partner, partners know you are nervous so that if necessary, you can discuss it to become more comfortable. Interestingly, research conducted by Byers and Demins nineteen ninety-nine found that strong sexual communication and non-sexual communication within a romantic relationship were both highly related to sexual and relationship satisfaction. As we have discussed, talking about sex can be difficult sometimes. Even if we have experience talking about sexuality in group educational settings, this is different than communicating with a partner or potential partner sexually. Communicating about our own sexuality involves emotional vulnerability on a different level. One way intimate partner communication is different is that it is a mutual and shared vulnerability between the people, whereas leading a group positions the facilitator's role as having different vulnerability than the students have. A personal sexual interaction is about you and your interactions. This is not the same as your role facilitating a group. In the group, the professional self is used as a tool that is focused on the group's experience. This focus on the student is also the case in one-on-one professional interactions with individuals. It becomes clear then that an ability to conduct an educational discussion about sexuality doesn't necessarily transfer to communicating with an intimate partner sexually. Communicating about sex. Sexual disclose requires trust and vulnerability. For some people, it can be relatively easy and fun to talk about sexual interactions and preferences. Others feel private about these matters or are not sure what language to use or that they might, might be judged poorly for having interest in or enjoying something sexually. This vulnerability and trust contribute to the feelings of intimacy and connection that can enhance our ability to express and share our sexuality in both casual and more long-term relationships. However, there are ways to improve communication, especially sexual communication. Tips for sexual communication include know what you want, whether it is what you prefer in a relationship, partners, or your favorite ways to get to an orgasm, know this for and about yourself. What are your expectations, needs, and preferences generally and specifically? Tell your partner what you want. Most times, it will work well to discuss things about your sexual interactions in general ways when you are not having sex. Raise it during a walk together or over coffee. Sandwich changes you'd enjoy or compliments you have between positive comments like this. I really like it when you kiss my neck. I always enjoy for you to spend lots of time kissing me before focusing on my genitals. And oh, sweetie, when you hold me real tight, I feel so good. If you aren't sure, check it out. In moments of arousal, it can be easy to misread sexual communication since what we want and how we want it is different at different times. Don't assume what worked once will always work. If you aren't sure if what you are doing is being received as you hope, ask if you want to initiate something new as if it's okay to try. Be open, just as you hope to not be judged or opposed when you have ideas about ways to interact sexually. Don't doubt your partner feels similarly. If he or she suggests something you are not open for, try to respond with something more open than no. Try to be open for exploring alternatives. Perhaps there is a version of the original suggestion can address the desire shared and be more to your liking. Or see if there is a mutual agreeable compromise that you can both enjoy. Be honest. Sometimes we communicate things because it makes someone feel good to hear, think, or feel it. Things can be effective, this can be an effective way to move things along as in faking an orgasm in order to end a lengthy or uninspiring sexual interaction, or it can boost a partner's ego and self-esteem. The problem is your partner may, may begin to learn that that is how to please you, and since they enjoy pleasing you, you get more of what doesn't work. Don't make anyone feel bad about themselves, but simply say it, not everything you try will work, so speak up. A key aspect of building trust comes from the emotional connection that can be experienced from discussions about sexuality. Establishing intimacy involves having a mutual vulnerability that develops from sharing feelings of affection and love for the other and disclosing other aspects of yourself to each other. In this context, communicating with each other about pleasure and other needs, there's two things. It allows for addressing the immediate needs and it strengthens the fabric of the relationships itself. Researchers are aware of gender differences in terms of general communication patterns, and this has been supported in the research for a great deal of time. However, researchers have also discovered that these gender differences also apply to sexual communication in the context of romantic relationships. For example, Gottman and Carrier two thousand, in two thousand, found that men tend to send more negative messages than women or withdraw altogether. However, women tend to send clearer messages. They tend to set the emotional tone of an argument and women tend to use more qualifiers in their style of speaking than men. Our relationships have conflict. Conflict is natural in intimate relationships. A lack of arguing can signal trouble in a relationships and it isn't the conflict itself that is dangerous. It is the way the conflict is handled that may hurt the relationship. There are two kinds of conflicts in relationships, solvable and unsolvable problems. Solvable problems range from everyday annoyances to having differences on major issues. Just because a problem is solvable does not mean it gets solved. The problem-solving steps about above offer some assistance. For those perpetual differences between you that will not be fixed, agree or to disagree. Honoring and respecting your partner as you disagree. Excuse me. Sometimes we won't agree or will need to decline or refuse something that is communicated. Saying no can be delivered effectively when you remember to appreciate the invitation, um, I thanks for asking me, to decline clearly and explicitly. Um, I don't want to offer an alternative if possible example, uh, but how about we? How we communicate about sexuality in our workplace as a sexual educator provides the basis of our integrity. We can create feelings of confidence by demonstrating our knowledge, comfort, and ability to discuss sexuality when we use languages in ways that includes everyone and values those who are different. Knowing the correct terms for topics related to sexuality and allowing others to use the words they know. Knowing the correct terms for topics related to sexuality and allowing others to use the words they know. Can be very helpful in facilitating discussions in groups and one-on-one. Creating a safe place to discuss important sis- sensitive issues. And private matters is a gift you can provide through honoring the individual experience. And the needs and comfort of those involved.
He's holding up sis.
Just about to say I'm gonna take a drink of water right now.
Okay, okay. And you're doing great, thank you so much.
No problem. Okay.
Really, I thank you because I'm still slaving away.
Oh, the things we do.
Okay, relationship structures. Single living is increasingly common among people for all or part of their adulthood. With forty-five percent of Americans age eighteen and over reporting being single as of twenty nineteen. Most adults who choose living single are happy with their status, though the degree of happiness varies greatly, of course. Adults are spending more time single for many reasons, including delaying marriage, often until our college. High rates of divorce and increasing social support for choosing a single lifestyle. Single people have a variety of sexual interaction patterns in relationship that may include celibacy. Serial monogamy, a long-term exclusive partnership. Multiple concurrent partners in a primary relationship with occasional other partners. There is strong encouragement in American culture to pursue and maintain a monogamous committed. Relationship with another person and a long-term partnership. Taking a step further, this expectation is put in the context of the hetero normative bias prevalent in American culture. All this adds up to a push towards a man and a woman living in a marriage relationship as the preferred relationship status. Indeed, ones report health and well-being generally are better for those who are married than those who are not. Although men who are married report being happier than do women who are married. As compared to their unmarried counterparts. People who are married report having more frequent sex than do other couples. The marriage rate for Americans is seven point five per thousand total population. The encouragement in American culture to pursue a monogamous relationship. May not always be conducive to maintaining a high level of satisfaction sexually or relation relational. Over a long period of time. Esther Perel discusses this in her book. Mating in captivity where she questions whether it is possible for intimacy and commitment to coexist. With maintaining high sexual satisfaction. Perel argues that hot sex requires distance, mystery and danger. None of which are available in the social constraints of a typical North American marriage. Marriage rights and ceremonies are cultural expressions and events that vary widely. Marriage is said to be many things, an institution, a sacred bond, a lifelong commitment and more. Marriages form, continue and end for many complex reasons. Among the reasons for each of these is the context that the marriage represents the qualities of a healthy relationship. Some states are recognizing a legal opportunity for same-sex couples to marry. This remains a controversial topic politically. Equal access to laws and opportunities for everyone regardless of sex, gender or orientation. Is rooted in the universal values of equality and human rights. Property, insurance covers and tax benefits are among the tangible possible benefits to having access to legal marriage. Additionally, many same-sex couples wish to utilize this traditional recognition of commitment and legal contract. As a demonstration of their love and relationship, just as do men and women who marry. There are parallels in how sexual relationships and interactions are regulated by the government. Based on sexual orientation and race. Only during contemporary times has marriage between people of different races been legal throughout the United States. Prior to that time. Miss, misinnigation? Misinnigation or sex between members of different races was also illegal in many states. Only very recently has the US Supreme Court counteracted existing state laws against sodomy. These laws have an. Aerob. Obic, nope. Erotophobic, there we go.
Erotophobic, you got it.
These laws have erotic phobic or a sex negative. Tone overall and are used to specifically criminalize same-sex sexual interaction. Of course, people of all sexual orientation participate in nearly all sexual ha- behaviors to some extent. The only exception is vaginal penile intercourse since same-sex couples won't have both sets of genitals available. To perform this behavior. In addition to being single or part of a couple, there are other variations and alternatives for relationships. Polymoris refers to having many loves. There is a very interesting book of polymory written by Easton and Lizette. Called the ethical slut that claims to be a guide for anyone who dreams of having all the sex and love. And friendship they want. Polyerotic refers to having many sexual partners. Either or both may be the case in extrarelational relationship. Among those who are married, there are two types of extramarital relationships. Consentually, non-monogamous includes those who swing. As a couple with other individuals and or couples, polymory and polygamy. Some marriages and relationships are open. As as opposed to mona- monogamous or exclusive between two partners. In open relationships, one or both partners is also involved with one or more other people. With the full informed consent of both married or partner people. Additional people or couples join one or both of them for sexual interactions. This addition of others may be occasional, situational or more continuous and ongoing. Polygamy is a closed marriage that involves one husband with multiple wives and is practiced by some cultures. Non-consensual, non-monogamous. Includes affairs and sexual interaction with others without the informed consent of the other partner. People will port many reasons in addition to sexual interactions as their motive for having an affair. Including feeling appreciated and the excitement of the secret relationship. Many variations exist in how people configure the important relationships in their lives. The status of some relationships may be kept mostly private. Given the strong cultural preference for monogamous marriage relationships. However, there are communities that allow for this to be open and more accepting than mainstream society. Cohabitating or being a couple living together unmarried is now the most common status for relationships in America. Cohabit in America. Cohabitation sometimes precedes marriage for the couple and sometimes doesn't. Of course, the first option is not available for most same-sex couples. Research eh, from ten years ago has reported that couples who live together prior marriage are more likely to divorce. Than are couples who marry without cohabitating prior being married. However, a more recent research has been inconsistent in determining the effects cohabitation may have on marital success. Overall, more than forty percent of first marriages in Ameri- first marriages in America. End within fifteen years, the divorce rate in America has decreased significantly. It is now three point two per thousand total population, but this rate is consistently changing from year to year. Divorce is a complex issue and is experienced uniquely each time. Effective decision making. Effective decision making involves having full information about the situation. And alternatives and acting in alignment with your values and personal ethics. Our personal ethics are the set of rules that we use to deal with moral dilemmas. Individual personal ethics evolved over a lifetime as one experienced and learns more and perhaps gain clarity and insight. When we are young especially, our ethics are largely adopted from our family. And perhaps influenced by religious or spiritual beliefs. Some ethical ideas are so universal, they extend beyond individuals. This includes concepts like honesty, social justice and promise keeping. When considering ethical issues generally, as we move from the broad conceptual level of universal agreement. To more specific situations, there is often less consensus of support among people. An example of this is a potential conflict between supporting the concept of social injustice. And not supporting the rights of all people, regardless of sexual orientation to legally marry. Our personal code of ethics is based on our personal values. We all have attitudes about what we think is important in life and the things that we value. These ideas are usually formed from our socio-culture upbringing. We value people, things, experiences and ideas. Our ideas about right and wrong create our unique set of personal values. Each person has their own set of personal values and it is important to be aware of what those values entail and how they form our sense of self. This might include what we seek in a partner or a relationship, how we choose to spend our time and money or the work. Service and play we involve others in. A sense of wholeness and healthy satisfaction can be realized when one lives their life in accordance with their values. Realizing people have different values, it is best to acknowledge and respect their values difference see. Differences that exist as well. A very traditional psychologist Maslow created a hierarchy of needs and recognized that self-actualization. Was the most sought-after need. Maslow stated that not everyone we reaches this stage, but that those who do. Are much more satisfied in their lives. Reaching self-actualization comes from a deep understanding and connection to personal values. While as recognizing and respecting values that may offer. Cultural differences can be the source of much diversity in perspective. We are all subject to influences in our attitudes and belief. Our cultural heritage and current peer and support network influences our values and decisions. And our peers and experience with our cultural are themselves influenced by our values and decision. For instance, if we are raised with no explicit spiritual teaching present. We may decide as an adult to explore a peer- spiritual community on our own. The teachings of the new faith and the new relationships we build in that community may invite a shift. In some long-held values and beliefs. Supporting someone who is in an abusive or violent relationship. Whether we realize it or not, we all probably know someone who has or is experiencing abuse in a relationship. Remembering that it is likely to be the case in our group and individual interaction, it is a great first step. Abuse can happen to anyone, even those we perceive as powerful, assertive, strong and smart. Be open to hearing about the experience others might raise with you regarding relationship violence. Ask questions if there are visible signs of violence. Many people who are involved in abuse feel some shame or possible guilt about the situation and may not raise it directly. Some suggestions for tangible ways to be supportive include, tell them that it's not their fault. Tell them they don't deserve it. Believe them and let them know that you do. See if they need medical attention and check safety issues. Don't try to make them do something they are uncomfortable with. Recognize that leaving an abusive relationship is hard and takes time. Encourage them to build a wide support system, including friends and family and maybe join a support group. Encourage them to take a self-defense course. Give them good information about abuse, including the number for local cro- crisis line or the national domestic abuse line. At one eight hundred seven nine nine seven two three three. Read that in the blue box too?
Um, no, I would not, those are um, great highlights. For um, those of us to read on our own. Um, because they're they they could be specific to one situation or again a relationship there that you're in with someone. It is not key to the quiz, but highly recommended to review. Okay, so we want to want to read that tonight.
Moving right along. Ending relationships. Our relationships end, some end through separation or breakup. Some with divorce and others with death. Grief is felt at this time as a result of no longer getting our needs met. It is likely that the grief was present during the relationship. If needs were not being addressed then, but it often goes unnoticed or unrecognized. Feelings at this time may also involve letting go of hope for a potential. You had envisioned or feeling as though what you thought was there was not. Being in the midst of the grief feelings can cause stress. Some suggestions for dealing with a hurtful breakup include. Commit to mo- mourn and learn from the experience. Take all the time you need and do not let a new relationship distract you at this time. Use a hospice approach to ending the relationship. Make a commitment to compassion over ego competition. Do this by making it more important to be kind than to be right. Get through this without the use of potentially harmful or distracting substances. Drugs and alcohol facilitate. The avoidance of grief. Remember that anyone can love and be lovable and not everyone will love you in the way that you want them to. Delay major decisions for thirty days if possible. Stress affects clear thinking. Only have contact when you no longer feel you need it. Wait until it is neutral and the charge is gone for you. Source, How to Be an Adult in a Relationship by Rico. Ending a relationship can be very difficult, but sometimes it is the best thing to do. In a relationship, if a relationship is not healthy or enjoyable for everyone involved, then it may have to end. Sadly, that very often means someone will be hurt in the process. Sometimes it is appropriate and necessary to put one's need first. In these cases, it usually is better for everyone that the relationship ends. If you are initiating the ending, be honest, direct and unravering in delivering your message. It is not an act of kindness to falsely lead someone on. If you are being dumped or are not the initiator of the breakup. Do not falsely romanticize the relationship or partner. It can be easy to focus on the loving romantic gazes and exchanges. Instead purposely envision the glares of anger or looks of indifference that were also present. Don't focus on only the good stuff you are losing, remember the reason it didn't work. It may also be that the breakup is more about getting space for yourself. Rather than having anything to do with your partner's suitability. Be sure to use the time after a breakup to get in touch with your own needs and desires. With regard to your life, relationships and partners. Without doing personal growth work between relationships, we might redo patterns from our past relationships. This can best be avoided by learning from our relationship experiences. As a sexual health promotion professional. You will no doubt encounter many women and men in various stages of relationship joy. Pain, sadness, excitement, attraction, happiness, contentment and transition. You have the potential to point people in the direction of books that may be helpful to them. Relationships or marriage counselors such as do the American Association of Married and Family Therapists. Or to suggest that they give themselves time, space, care and kindness when they are in a time of need. As some someone who people would turn to with their very intimate and personal questions. You will be called upon time and again to maintain their confidentiality and to provide support, reassurance and resources. For counseling or therapy. And that next is the reference.
And we're gonna go to interactive activity. So for interactive activity that you're gonna do on your own, there's two parts. Um, so it says, teaching healthy relationships. What resources exist in your community for teaching young people or older adults about healthy relationships? Do local schools, youth groups, or community organizations offer information or classes about health li- relationships? List up to three resources here and consider including the list in your party materials in case you find it helpful to share them with others. Um, I have not done so, but creating a resource guide for um, that's local or with some of the international, um, not international, but national sites or crises lines, things like that, those are really good um, to keep um, for reference. You could maybe even just type up a word document and have a reference sheet. But what they're encouraging here is as we're learning um, this really good information about what it looks like to really need help and being able to direct people to that help. Um, so you may find oftentimes people are very uncertain or very untrusting when it comes to um, getting the help that they need. So you could be that connection to saying, oh, no, I know a really good um, uh, let's say some type of therapist or counselor or um, someone that helps with um, energy healing. Um, you could say, hey, um, I got some good references for you. Why don't you go check these things out? That's a lot better than just telling someone to go to Google, go search, and go find you some help. You know what I mean? And so um, here they want you to put those references down. So not bad homework, right? Just want wanting you to apply what we've learned. The next one, supporting people in domestic violence situations. It is so, so, so very common. Where are you going to send someone if you recognize that they need help? Okay, um, so list those organizations, names, and contact information. Again, um, good point, making sure you click save your answer before you go to the next section section and then hitting that submit button for the activities, okay? Alright, we're going to the quiz. And everyone feel free to participate. So we, I think um, those relationship jewels that you read tonight, Yurisha, like we could all use whether we're helping someone or helping ourselves. Um, they're they're pretty uh, down-to-earth as far as a lot of everyday life practical things from the communication methods. Um, you know, communicating well with our partners, our family, a lot of those principles are um, not just for I guess, marriage or relation, it's just relationships overall. Well, communicating well and things like that, right?
Right.
Through these fifteen questions, we're gonna breeze through. So one, jealousy can help bolster self-esteem in relationship and help define boundaries.
True.
True. That is very true. Remember, there was a a distinct difference between when jealousy is unhealthy. Does anyone know how to tell the difference?
That was when it started becoming abusive, right?
Abusive and manipulative and things like that, right?
Right.
Okay, um, so we gotta mark that, sure. Okay, most people receive formal education on how to act when in a relationship. Is that how we all learn?
No.
Right, false. Uh, false. Three, jealousy proves the existence of love. Hmm.
I feel like that's a trick question.
Alright, so we're gonna go with you say false?
Yes.
So we're gonna go with false, so we're gonna see, cuz I'm gonna let y'all see. Okay, men and women are increasingly engaging in infidelity at similar rates. Can you answer that and step in the hall, take a message for me? Which of the above statements accurately describes the concept of acceptance? And feel free, if you wanna cheat, and go to another screen, acceptance. See, we did. We went over those definitions, and let me see, was it under make relationships work? Okay, acceptance was in unit nine, chapter two. An unconditional validation of your choices and lifestyle to be embraced as worthy, trusted, understood, and truly approved of in your uniqueness.
That's the last one.
Okay. Yes. Okay, which of the above statements accurately describes the concept of allowing? What is allowing? I'm gonna read, I'm reading it also same page. Chapter two. Allowing is heartfelt permission to be yourself. This allows the expression of one's deepest needs and wishes and encourages passion and aliveness. Uh, which one would that be?
The first one.
The first, okay. So which of the following statements accurately describes the concept of affection? So affection is to be loved, same page, chapter two. To be loved unconditionally all of the time and liked most of the time. Love is uniquely experienced by each person and is both physical and emotional. Uh, that is the third one, right?
Yes.
Okay, eight, what is meant by John Gottman's principle, let your partner influence you? Is it that one should always concede to what their partner desires if they want to sustain a relationship? Or is it people should try to stay connected with their partners by letting him or her know that they are valued in small ways? Is it always think and talk about positive feelings about your partner? Is it try to include your partner in your decision-making?
Um, they, the second one, people should try to stay connected with their partners?
I agree.
Cuz they really push that communicating, letting your partner know pretty much what's on your mind, communicating or expressing it, right? So that would be a great way to stay connected. Okay, nine, blank range from everyday annoyances to having differences on major air issues where blank are perpetual differences between partners that will not be fixed. Is it conflicts and fights, solvable problems, unsolvable problems, disagreements and arguments, or none of the above?
Solvable problems and unsolvable problems.
That is correct. And boy, is it sometimes hard to tell the difference between the unsolvable ones. Sometimes we just don't want to see it. Um, ten, the theoretical ther- therapy approach that encompasses the context of couple is called a circular approach, systems approach, sex therapy approach, or ethical approach? Was it not, let me look back in it, wasn't it um, a theory called the circular approach? Let me see. Relationship structure.
I don't remember that one. I was thinking about the um, the triangle one.
Right, okay, so let me see. So this is all review for me too, but I'm trying to remember. Thought that we went over it. Alright, so which one we wanna do, what we wanna try? Let's just pick one. I'm not gonna um, spend too much time. Um, you wanna go, what which approach did we wanna try?
Let's try.
Circular, system, sex, or ethical?
Let's try circular, I guess.
Okay. Well, the good news is, we're gonna get the answer and we can all, everybody else can get it right. Okay, which of the following is true of social capital? The status of being in relationships makes us happier? The status of being in relationships make us healthier? It is experienced by men and women differently, or all of the above?
All of the above.
All of the above.
Okay. And then twelve, okay, the triangular theory of love encompasses the following. Passion commitment love, persistence commitment love, passion intimacy commitment, or persistence intimacy commitment. Intimacy commit.
This is the one I was thinking about. I'm gonna say the last one.
Persistence, intimacy, and commitment? Okay. Okay, so what are the three primary contexts of communication? Is it social context, relational context, familial context? Cultural, social, psychological? Cultural, sexual, psychological? Social, psychological, relational? Mm-hmm, which one is it?
The second one, cultural, social, psychological.
Okay. Let's go ahead and hit it there.
Ain't nobody else saying nothing. Y'all don't let me be wrong by myself. I'm just unmuted.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I agree with you.
So she calling y'all out cuz we got a whole nother unit to go now. Are which of the following are signs of an abusive relationship? An individual, an individual who is excessively jealous and controlling? An individual who pushes for quick involvement and has unrealistic expectations of their partner? An individual who verbally abuses and isolates their partner? All of the above are signs of an abusive relationship.
All of the above.
All of the above.
Yes, unfortunately. Okay, which of the following um, were provides provided as good suggestions for dealing with a hurtful breakup? Is it rather than mourning the previous relationship, quickly jump into a new relationship? Oh, my goodness, of course not. Um, avoid using drugs and alcohol during the breakup period because they can facilitate avoidance of grief? Hmm, good thought. Um, make a big change in your life, like changing jobs or moving to get away from your ex-partner and start with a clean slate? Oh, sure, just get up and move. Uh, contact your partner frequently to facilitate closure.
Avoid, avoid using.
Avoid using drugs.
Alright, let's not use any crutches and think that it's gonna go away. Okay, we submitted the answers, so we got one is true. Two is false. Three is false. Four is true, men and women are increasingly engaging in infidelity at similar rates. We got that one wrong.
Where that statistics come from?
Right? Always have to remember according to research, right? Alright, which of the above statements accurately describes the concept of acceptance? Um, we're gonna do the last one, unconditional validation. Number six, the first option heartfelt permission to be yourself. Number seven, um, affection is gonna be the third option, to be loved unconditionally. Eight is the last option, try to include your partner in your decision-making. Really, I just knew that that second one was the best.
Wow.
You said both of them.
Yeah, I I totally disagree with that because people should try to stay connected with their partners by letting him or him or her know that they are valued in small ways. It's like keeping that connection like, you know. Yeah, I don't know. But okay, try to include your partner in your decision-making. Sure. Nine, um, solvable, unsolvable problems. Ten, it was the systems approach. Haha, circular, okay, systems approach. Um, eleven, all of the above. Twelve, man, we did terrible. Um, twelve, it is the third option, passion intimacy commitment. Um, thirteen is going to be the second cultural, social, um, psychological. Fourteen, all of the above, and fifteen, the second option, avoiding drugs and alcohol. Okay.
Good thing we can go back.
Yeah, listen, I didn't, I didn't did all fourteen and this my second go around and it's like I'm brand new. I'm sorry.
Can I get six and seven?
Yes, six.
Thank you, looking in advance.
Six was the t- um, first option, heartfelt permission. And seven is gonna be the third option.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Almost there, almost there, y'all. You see, I did not wanna cancel tonight, but I was falling apart on y'all and I'm like, it's gonna be alright. It's gonna be alright. Um, let me see. Sexual and reproductive health, right? Yep. This is, um, we're doing good time. I'm gonna breeze through here if y'all don't mind. But it's all good stuff. It has to do with a lot of um, our anatomy when it comes to birth and reproduction, okay? So we won't spend a lot of time because you've either had children and you're somewhat familiar, and so we will do a revisit, right? A refresher, or you have not had children or had this experience. And this will also be an introduction. And when you wanna know more, you just go and research and read more in depth, okay? Win-win here. Access to information about sexuality and health promotion is a critical aspect of achieving and maintaining health. So learning about what is um, psychologically normal, especially in terms of our own body, provides the foundation for ongoing health screenings. Positioning ourselves as models for and resources for information about sexual health promotion can inspire others to access information and health promotion strategies for themselves as well. So sexual healthcare, routine physical exams are an important part of health maintenance. Generally, these could occur for healthy people once every one or two years. It is generally wait. It is generally recommended that women have gynecological exams once each year or as recommended by the healthcare provider. During a gynecological exam, sometimes called a pelvic exam, a woman's healthcare provider typically examines both her internal reproductive parts, which is her vagina and her cervix, as well as her vulva, external genitals. Now, a pap smear, which tests for cervical changes, including those related to cervical cancer, and or HPV tests may be performed as well. It is also common for healthcare providers to screen young younger than age twenty-five women for chlamydia, gonorrhea, um, during gynecological exams. However, as testing practices vary, women who have been sexually active regardless of their age should ask their healthcare provider about getting tested for sexually transmissible infections. So genital self-exams are also an important part of reproductive and sexual health about once each month or as directed by a healthcare provider. Women should look at their genitals using a mirror. Women should look at their genitals using a mirror. Women can look at various parts of the vulva for changes in color or texture and other irregularities. Now, once a woman knows what is normal for her body, she can detect changes and consult a health practitioner if changes are found. Likewise, some but not all healthcare providers recommend that women perform monthly breast self-exams, and this is done by rubbing each breast using circular motions, starting at the nipples and areyota, areola, excuse me, moving outward on each breast. If any lump saw irregularities are found, a woman should seek medical treatment. A health professional should provide regular check for lumps or abnormalities annually. Men can also get breast cancer and should periodically examine their breasts for irregularities. The American Cancer Society recommends that women get a mammogram every one or two years beginning at the age.
Forget now, Amber.
What'd you say? Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
See up for that.
Okay, okay. Alright, so after the age of forty, uh, one or two years beginning then, okay? Um, however, recent modifications to the recommendations by the US government suggest women get a mammogram starting at age fifty instead of forty. The result, this resulted in a great deal of criticism and remains a hot topic debate. It is important to acknowledge that these guidelines are for wi- women with no known risk factors. Women in high-risk groups should be screened earlier and more frequently. The early and or more frequent mammograms may be recommended for women with symptoms or change in their breasts or with family history of breast cancer. So, I'm gonna add a note, because as I learn, I like to share. Uh, when getting mammograms for women who are very um heavy-chested or as we know anything like a, a double D and up. When you get your mammogram, a lot of times you may have to come for a repeat test because your breasts are oftentimes very dense and you get fa- they get kind of like a false positive reading.
True, I've had that happen to me.
Yes, um, I am not a fan of it, one, because um knowing that we had, I'm one of them, we have dense breasts. Um, there's other examinations that they can do or another test that they could do. And to me, to have someone come in two to three times to make sure they're okay is a waste of resources and a waste of my time. I do wanna be safe, but I don't wanna revisit those appointments that frequently.
I know, that's right.
Um, I am that, that pushy person when, when it's time, it's my two years. I do have some uh breast cancer in, in my family and um so I'm forty-two and do need to get mine done every two years. And they're always calling me and always trying to get me to do them, and I'm not quick, because I'm like, yeah, which test are you gonna do? That same one, we gonna need you to come a couple times, I'm not gonna do that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What do you mean false positive?
So, that means that they're looking at that mass and, and what it is in the um the imagery, there's like dark spaces and they can't tell if it's just compacted tissue? Or there's something there, so they're looking for this dark spot and that would a lot of times indicate some type of um growth or uh can't, you know, cancerous uh signs, and so um that darkness is sometimes just our tissues.
Okay.
And then they'll have you come back to make sure. What was that?
I said I'm truthful and so I, I was wondering what you meant about that.
Yeah, so they'll just say, I want you, I'm not, they're, they'll, they'll try to make sure they're not putting you in any panic. They'll just say, we just need to redo that imagery, and they don't do the whole thing all over, they'll concentrate on whatever area that was that they're not sure about and just revisit it. And it's something that pretty much happens only with women who, who have really big breasts. I mean, my mom wears a H and same thing, she's, she's on her second.
Thank you for sharing this information, because I had no idea.
Yeah, she's on her second test, she's, she's what, sixty-seven? And I'm like, don't make them have you running back and forth, especially now, you know, it's COVID, everybody's not trying to run to doctor's office. Have them give you a different test. I don't know the name of it, so you have to um get that, that part of your research on your own. But yeah, you can request and ask and say, you know that um, you guys usually have a hard time with it? Or I don't wanna do this multiple times, could we um please do it a different way? You know, there's always more than one way, right? It's, it's all about cost and, and also your insurance. Some insurance don't wanna start with the most expensive exam. It's the same exam that they would send you to, um, if they did get a, what they would consider like a positive reading, like something wasn't okay. Um, that, that next test that you would get. And then they would know for sure, because they would do more blood workup and then a different type of um imaging.
Yeah, don't ask them, just ask them if you can have the four D versus the three D.
Yep. They're like, go and get what you trying to see. Um, so also for women, obtaining a regular Pap test is very important part of preventative healthcare. All women, including those who are post-menopausal, should get this routine screening for cervical cancer within three years of becoming sexually active or by the age of twenty-one. Um, this is helpful in your primary care physician finding out what's your norm. Because remember, we're not made all one and the same, so before your um teenager or your young adult um becomes um very sexually active or vivid, it helps the physician kinda get an idea what their norm is. Um, and if something develops, did they, you know, have that before or after um their sexual activity, and sometimes you can catch it and sometimes not. During the test, cells are scraped from the cervix and examined in a laboratory. Pap tests are not painful, yeah, depends on who's doing it, and may be recommended annually. Every six months, every two years, or at other frequencies depending on a woman's personal health status. Um, personal preventative health exams, men should do monthly, including testicular self-examination. Self-exams are done by rubbing the scrotum with one's fingers to feel for lumps, bumps, or irregularities. Early detection is key, and all unusual bumps should be checked by a doctor. Men should receive regular testicular exams from a health provider every two years. According to the American Cancer Society, testicular cancer is the most common among men between twenty and fifty-four years. Unlike many other cancers, it is one that more commonly strikes younger men. Testicular cancer is one of the most curable forms of cancer and the risk of dying from this cancer is about one in five thousand. That is good to know. Cancer of the prostate is among those that occur most frequently and are most deadly for men according to the American Cancer Society. A physical examination can be dete- can help detect prostate cancer early. That is if the man go to the doctor, ladies, if they're not getting regular exams, they're not gonna find out in a timely manner. Using digital and rectal examination. A digital rectal examination involves a healthcare provider inserting his fingers into a man's rectum and feeling the size and texture of a man's prostate. And you wonder why they haven't come, right? Although, some men may feel uncomfortable having this examination. It is quite common and it is an important early detection tool. A blood test is also available for early diagnosis of prostate cancer. Although, many men will have prostate difficulties as they age, such as prostate enlargement, which is quite common and can cause men to feel as though they have to urinate frequently even when they do not. Prostate cancer is less common, but quite serious. Pregnancy and family planning, deciding whether or not to have a child is a life-altering choice. The birth of a child is considered by many parents to be the happiest event of their lives. Planning and spacing births can directly impact a woman's educational and social economical status. Of course, fatherhood can be a life-changing experience for men as well. Heterosexual couples that marry often experience a great deal of encouragement and curiosity around their family planning. Um, there can also be social and familial pressure on couples to parent. It is wise to be deliberate and thoughtful when taking on such an important responsibility as pregnancy and parenting. Alright, concerns about pregnancy or fertility begin with the onset of puberty or menarche for that is your first menstrual period um in women and then spermarque, first ejaculation in men. For women, menopause marks the end of fertility and is experienced usually around th- forty-five to fifty-five years of age. Most women experience about thirty-five to forty years of their life as fertile. Men can continue to produce sperm throughout their life. As men age, the sperm do become less viable, which may contribute to a higher rate of birth defects among older fathers, however, it is possible for a man to be fertile until a very old age. How about that? Alright, given a single ejaculation could contain up to four hundred thousand sperm and women may have four hundred or more fertility cycles during her lifetime. It is surprising pres- pregnancy doesn't happen more often. The ova is capable of being fertilized for only twelve to eighteen hours once released and the sperm can survive in the female productive tract for two to four days. For this reason, when pregnancy is desired, having sperm already waiting near the fallopian tubes in uterus when ovulation occurs is very helpful. In preparation for possible implantation of a fertilized egg, a woman releases hormones that promote the growth of endometrium, the inner lining of the uterus. After her period each month, later in the cycle, hormones cause ovulation to happen. If the egg is not fertilized, the endometrial lining swallows off, administration begins approximately fourteen days after ovulation. The sperm and ova usually unite in the fallopian tubes. If fertilization does occur, then the fertilized egg travel to the uterus where it may be attached to the endometrium, also called implantation. Following success, implantation, the placenta forms to sustain the pregnancy. The placenta that develops during pregnancy on the uterine wall contains many blood vessels and connects the fetus to the woman, providing nourishment and oxygen from the mother's body. It is connected to the fetus by the umbilical cord, which consists of one large vein and two arteries. So the fertilized egg then develops rapidly and implants into the uterine wall for about nine months of a very complex growth and this process is called gestation. Gestational development is sometimes broken into three periods. The first period of the ovo, when fertilization, implantation, and cell differentiation happens. During the period of embryo, which is that three to nine weeks, the central nervous system and heart begin to form as due to gonads, ears, eyes, arms, and legs. The ninth week until birth marks the period of the fetus. So fetal development during the remaining weeks of the first trimester includes, so you see how much happens before you even like conceptualize it good that you're pregnant, that three to nine weeks is really, really, really key, there's a lot going on, it's like the foundation, okay? And then they call that next for, that next stage, that fetal development, the first trimester. So that's where you have a human form responding to stimulation, um form vital organs and operating circulatory systems. During the second trimester, um skeletal system, forming head and body hair, sucking and body movements, eyelashes, eyebrows, and translucent skin. And third trimester, opening eyes, viability, meaning that that baby can possibly survive outside the womb, fat forming beneath the skin, and eventually at about thirty-eight weeks, a healthy birth. Then you have, uh, while most pregnancies are problem-free or include minor discomfort and ailments, some do involve very serious medical problems for the pregnant woman or fetus, and it can be an ectopic pregnancy. Um, that's when the zigo implants outside of the uterus, often in the fallopian tubes, which is very painful, and this can be a life-threatening uh condition for women. Untreated, uh chlamydia or gonorrhea can increase the likelihood of a tubal pregnancy and cause scarring on the fallopian tubes. Then there's miscarriage or spontaneous abortion. Prior um twenty weeks gestation, rates of miscarriage vary greatly since many occur before pregnancy is even diagnosed or even detected. Preterm births, a delivery prior to thirty-seven weeks gestation often includes medical complications for the fact, which are more serious with early, earlier delivery. Infants born as early as twenty-two weeks gestation have survived, given amazing advancement and preterm infant care. Then there's um fetal abnormalities. Now, they say that a delivery prior to thirty-seven weeks gestation can be considered preterm, but by thirty-eight weeks, they're like, okay, let's induce it. Um, fetal abnormalities, I, I'm gonna let you not have babies at thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one, and forty-two weeks, so. I've been there and did it. Fetal abnormalities, sometimes referred to as birth defects, as abnormality presents at birth that causes physical and mental disability. There are great variations in the severity, from minor impairment to death. Then there's tests that allow for fetal testing, amniocentesis, that's where the long needle is used to extract a small amount of the amniotic fluid. Then you have the chorionic villus sampling, that's a sample of just placental tissue. And then these tests extract cells that contain a full genetic code for the fetus. Again, even with all that testing, they may or may not be one hundred percent accurate and you have to decide if you're going to birth that child even if they suspect that there is um some challenges present with the genetics. If it runs in your family, then that's something you wanna look out for. Um, oftentimes, if it is nothing that you all are familiar with, some have found that they've been wrong. It was just um a scare. Okay. Sexuality during pregnancy. Women tend to experience an ebb and flow a great deal of emotion during pregnancy and there is great variation in terms of type or duration of these feelings. Some women may feel awkward or unsexy, where others may feel beautiful, vibrant and full of life. So through research, they found that there may be a lessening of women's sexual interest during pregnancy and therefore decline in sexual frequency and a shift in the type of sexual activities preferred. Providing this is communicated with the woman's partner, sexual and relational, relationship satisfaction can remain high. Men may also feel differently during this time, and some women worry about penetration injuring the baby or in interrupting with the pregnancy, although this is not the case. Also, like women, men may have been raised to believe that the pregnant body is non-erotic, making it difficult to connect pregnancy to eroticism. Although, there are no rules during pregnancy when it comes to sexual activity. There are some precautions that should be observed. So if a woman has a history of miscarriage, she should consult with a physician before engaging in any activities that may lead to orgasm. An orgasm produces powerful uterine contractions that may induce a spontaneous abortion in some women, especially during their first trimester. If a woman has vaginal bleeding, she should immediately consult with a healthcare professional before engaging in any type of sexual activity. If sexual activity, particularly penetration, elicits a pain response that is not easily remedied by change in positions, the couple should refrain from engaging in intercourse. Particularly during the final months of pregnancy, pressure on the abdomen should be avoided. Late in pregnancy, um, an orgasm is likely to induce uterine contractions. This is not considered harmful, but it may be wise to discuss this with her, um, her practitioner. And overdue pregnancies, having an orgasm is one way to try to induce labor. And so this can be used as an aid and many have. They'll say it'll help bring that baby down. Alright, actual birth, methods of childbirth are increasingly varied. As people seek alternatives to medical approaches to this life event. Long gone are the days when a woman separate from her partner played a sedated and passive role in this experience. Now, it is typical for the couple to be actively engaged in many or all aspects of the pregnancy and birthing process. In addition to metal practitioners being present at birth. Family members and others may attend. Sometimes medical practitioners are replaced by trained birth specialists. That may be involved. Most typically in OBGYN. A trained midwife or a nurse midwife will assist with the labor and delivery process. Births are occurring in hos- at hospitals, birthing centers, and in homes. Research conducted by Smoke in two thousand and one examined women's experiences of care with obstetricians in hospital birth. And midwives out of hospital birth center births. Four to nine months after the birth of their babies. Smoke found that women who use midwives had more satisfying experiences than women who use obstetricians. The decision-making process were more complex in the midwifery group. And that there was more opportunity to develop a relationship with the caregiver. Unlike the obstetrician group, regardless of the type of birthing plan used, there is also a choice. Of whether pain medications will be used. And though those will include sedatives for relaxation, local anesthesia to numb specific areas. Regional anesthesia to numb the entire pelvic area. And epidural, which is the most common and delivers pain medications as need through a tube inserted. At the base of a pregnant woman's spine. Now, with those different birthing options, if you have not had a chance to experience um both or the. The diverse background of the midwife or home type birth versus the obstetrician, um. There's always a choice to use those medications when needed for both options. However, a midwife is going to show you alternative ways to doing birthing. That um resonate a little bit more with the natural process. So if you haven't had an epidural, having an epidural is going into your spine and a lot of times you have problems. With your sciatic and and different pains afterwards, those are just side effects from having it. You may not have to have that if you have a natural birth. Uh a midwife will tell you the pros and cons. Um having that regional anesthetic where they numb the entire pelvic area. This pretty much takes you away from the process of even um using your muscles to birth the baby into the world. Um which is great, it makes a connection with you, the baby, and you can find out a lot of things that you won't know through textbooks. However, um when you have both of those balances, um. One versus the other is gonna sway you towards what they call kind of like. Your medical norm, the obstetrician's gonna be like, here, take these meds and we're gonna keep it moving. And your midwife is gonna say, hey, you have options. I have different ways to help you get through this that that you would be satisfied with. Let's try some things. Um C-section and cesarean, that's a major surgery that involves removing the fetus from the uterus through an incision in the mother's abdomen. Um seven layers of skin, muscles, and organ linings are cut in this procedure. Labor and delivery complication, as well as the woman, pregnant woman having some STIs are reasons a C-section may occur. Vaginal birth is often possible for a woman who has already have had a cesarean birth. They don't always encourage it, um because again, when you're dealing with an obstetrician, they are going to sway you or persuade you to do the. Um there there are no one. And if you want to do more of a natural way, if you've already had a cesarean. A midwife is gonna go ahead and evaluate your charts and say, hey. You do not show any risk with this pregnancy that would make it impossible for you to. Or or not so healthy for you to um have a vaginal birth, let's go for it. Postpartum, postpartum can be a difficult time for women and their partners for many reasons. For her, these can include hormone changes, stress, sleeplessness, life changes, and depression. Um you are evaluated six weeks after having. On your baby, well, there's a stage, you only in two weeks later and then six weeks later. And they do an assessment to gauge how well you're adjusting, because naturally you're gonna experience some depression. Some lowness of mood change and 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 like that because of your hormones. However, they just need to see how well you're adjusted. Some people don't bounce back as well as others. Um so they call this the postpartum period, and so this postpartum depression. Can become a severe depression that starts within the four weeks of delivery. Research indicates that thirteen percent of the postpartum women experience a depressive sys- um uh getting tongue tied. Postpartum women experience depressive symptoms. These symptoms include deep sadness, apathy, loss of interest in things previously enjoyed, and withdrawal. The cause of postpartum depressions are not well understood, and it is on ongoing research for scientists. Women who experience depression or sadness following the birth of their child. May find it overwhelming to actively engage in the care and feeding of their baby. As a sexual health promotion professional, you may have an opportunity to encourage these women to describe their feeling to the healthcare provider. Or to a trained counselor or therapist who may be able to offer some support or assistance. Um in this area where there's not a lot of research on why and how um this depression occurs. Uh with hormones being a major factor, um that's that's one. But just like we discussed with sexuality and how um it impacts how we feel or what our experience is. It's the same thing during postpartum. If you have a lot going on in your household, a lot going on in your family. Your normal tolerance for the things that are going on is a lot different. So just the children needing help with homework, or the baby crying, or um maybe you had. Um the C-section and your stitches are hurting and you're sore, or you have to carry the baby and do more than you really should. All those things um can apply so much pressure and be so compounded that you just kind of lose yourself. Um and with that assessment and with care, not everyone has the same support system. So this looks differently for different people, even if it has the same bottom line. Um so also be a good person to look out for someone when they look like they need um more support. Um oftentimes, when they go for their their doctor's visits, they um if you have any cultural differences. Just a word or terminology would not allow the doctor to pick up on. Um that one is experiencing more more stress or depression than another. Cause sometimes they're actually things like, oh, okay, well, have you felt like taking your own life? No. Okay, well, on that test, did it actually, did you feel like taking somebody else's life? You know, maybe not, um but just terms and African-American women, when you ask about stress. Most of the times on a scale of one to ten, we rate three or four, and statistically, they have information that shows that we operate at a six, seven as a norm. So, you know, was stressful to one or another, sometimes people don't even know how stressed they really are. And terminology is key when trying to find out how someone is really, really feeling. Uh fertility, many people spend their teen and young adult years of their life trying to prevent pregnancy. It can be a big shift to focus on fertility with the intent to become pregnant. Unfortunately, some find that untreated STIs or other health conditions may cause complications. For their ability to conceive a viable pregnancy. Couples who are unsuccessful at conceiving after twelve consecutive months of trying. Might consider medical exams for establishing the fertility level of each person. There are numerous ca- causes of infertility and they include weight. Tobacco alcohol use, problems with the um uterus or the endometrial scarring. Uh anything like uterine fibroids. Then there's problems with the fallopian tube, scarring and blockage from um adhesions due to prior infection or endometriosis. Sperm problems, not enough or poor quality. Cervical muscle, mucous factors, and problems with the ovary that cause ovulatory dysfunction. So with ovulatory dysfunction, problems may be with the ovary itself. Primary ovary failure or due to lack of adequate stimulation to the ovary. To ovulate or due to hormonal imbalance. Um ovulatory drugs may be prescribed by a woman's healthcare provider. If this is the problem or one of the problems with fertility, when the ovary is capable of ovulating. The drug is given for five days, starting around the third day of the cycle. And if effective, should induce ovulation within twelve days after that. It may require multiple months of therapy. So the most common treatment for infertility include intrauterine insemination, artificial insemination. And vitrofer- fertilization, okay? I was looking and we got like three more sections, um. Preventing pregnancy unprotected vaginal intercourse poses a risk of for pregnancy and potential infection. In fact, up to nine of ten women who have vaginal intercourse with no protection. Without using any form of birth control over the course of a year could experience a pregnancy. And discussing the effectiveness of contraception. There is always a range between a perfect theoretical use rate and a typical use rate of effectiveness. The typical use rate is as much as fifteen percent lower than what is theoretically possible with perfect use every time. This is because human error is bound to occur, since we're not perfect every time we do something. Whether it is how we use a method, when we use it, or if we use it. Many variables can impact contraceptive methods effectiveness. And among things that can most influence how well someone uses contraception. Is how well the method she uses works for her and her partner. No method is right for everyone or every couple. Communication about options that are available and advantages and disadvantages of each. This can help identify which will be best suited. For some couples, you choose to visit healthcare providers together to explore this important area of reproductive and sexual health. So as you may know, many women have tried multiple forms of contraceptives. Some have used the chip, some have had the depot shot, someone have had all kinds of different. Um things that they're using, uh Nuverine, the pill. What would um dosage of the pill, you know, is it low, is it high? Um so those things will determine what works best for you and and also its effectiveness. Birth control and abortion, birth control pills and oral contraceptives are the most common used form of contraception. Pill users may take a pill daily during three to four weeks of each cycle. Oral contraceptives prevent pregnancy through the use of hormones. Pills can regulate periods and provide some reproductive health benefits beyond pregnancy prevention. So when pill use is discontinued, fertility returns quickly. Which is why it had, it is so important to take pills as directed if you wish to reduce your risk of pregnancy. Pills provide no protection against sexually transmissible infections. And they may, they must be prescribed by a doctor and can improve acne and cause breast tenderness and headaches. Pills are generally not recommended for women aged thirty-five and over who smoke. Pills are ninety-nine point seven effective when used perfectly, but typically use is ninety-two percent effective. At preventing pregnancy. As a sexual health promotion professional, as you meet women. You may have heard various myths about the pills such as birth control pills cause weight gain. Make women infertile or cause cancer. None of these are true. You can learn more about common birth control myths and the truth behind them at Planned Parenthood's website. So they go on, I told you about the different contraceptives, Nuverine, hormone injections. Interuterine contraceptive, um et cetera. Surgical non-hormonal methods, so you want to explore all those different things because you may be dealing with different clients. Who've explored those options, okay, or maybe you have yourself. Problems they may impact uh sexual functioning. You're gonna hear about sex drive and libido all day long. Interpersonal problems in a relationship have a direct influence on the level of satisfaction experienced sexually in a relationship. Among the most common reasons for withholding or avoiding sex with a partner is relationship troubles. Feeling angry or disappointed or sad about something in your romantic relationship can dampen libido. Just as an interpersonal emotional distress like depression can. Researchers have consistently found that sexual and relational. Relationship satisfaction are intertwined for both when men and women. Sometimes sexual dissatisfaction is due to not having access. This is where I might need somebody, let me see. Sometimes sexual dissatisfaction is due to not having access to information about one's self or partner that is sufficient to learn about. And experience the desired responses. Cultural messages that impose unrealistic and inaccurate ideas about sexual functioning and interactions. Can also create barriers to sexual well-being. Our health status of that. Our partners can have a big impact on our sexual functioning and well-being. Chronic illnesses that impact sexuality include diabetes, cancer, multiple sclerosis, and stroke. Some of the medications that treat illnesses as well as those that treat depression and high blood pressure can impact sexual functioning. Typically, these drugs impact sexual functioning by interfering with sexual arousal or orgasm. For example, cancer treatments can cause vaginal dryness, vaginal pain during intercourse. Sensitive areas of the skin caused by radiation. That's gonna have lack of libido, difficulties reaching orgasm, or just impaired body image. If you're looking in the mirror and you're just like, really don't like what you're seeing, you feel so awful and you're thinking about your surgery and how you're not sure. Your beautiful self that you knew before. Those things could have such an impact on your thought process and could make you just shut down. Many of these problems improved after treatment ends, but some problems persist for months or years following treatment. As a sexual health promotion professional, you may be the first person who has asked a cancer survivor about. Her or his sexual well-being. You can play an important role in helping to connect them with books. Um such as Ann Cat's book, Women, Cancer, and Sex, products such as lubricants, massage cream, or vibrator. Or professionals such as trained sex therapists or counselors who can assist them with their sexual lives. Alright. So and the, what is this, this chart down here, categories of sexual dysfunctions. Um this is a little redundant, we did go over when we talked about anatomy and. And um some other things, so hypoactive sexual desire, um sexual aversion disorder. Female sexual arousal disorder, male erectile disorder. Female orgasmic disorder, male orgasmic disorder, premature ejaculation, dysparenea. And vaginismus, so just go back over those definitions. And we're gonna look at that interactive activity, and they want you to map your community's resources. So where in your community can a pregnant person go for medical care during her pregnancy? Are you able to help? So they want you to identify at least two clinics or organizations that provide prenatal care in your community. List their names, address, telephone number, website, and the type of services they offer. Which clinics or organization offer low cost or sliding scale prenatal care? If there are no clinics in your immediate community, how far would pregnant person need to travel in order to seek prenatal care? So I listed those facilities, their contact information, et cetera. This is a five section activity. Don't be intimidated, hit save my answer and go on to the next thing. What type of birthing um. Services are available in your community? Do you all have a birthing um center anywhere around? Is it twenty miles away? Is it five miles away? Where's the closest one for a natural birth? Where's the closest one for natural births? What all different type of births are offered? And of course you have your um hospital, but what other um options does your community have? Three, uh, resources existing in a neighborhood about uh pregnancy prevention. Uh, where can they find pamphlets, where can they find the um. Um, birth control, etcetera. You wanna put that information down. Again, make sure you're hitting save my answer. And number four, is emergency contraception easily available in your community? Put down three pharmacies where they can get them at and the prices, etcetera. And five, evaluation of your community resources. So if you did all that resource, those resources, you might have to call some places, check on some stuff. Um, how was it? Does your community have some good stuff available? Or is it like, oh wow, I'm glad I don't need that, I don't know what they're gonna, what they gonna do? You know, uh, you wanna get those resources down and they want your assessment. You wanna hit save your answer and now let's go to the quiz, y'all ready to unmute?
Yes.
Alright. Men can continue to produce sperm throughout their life and women can continue to produce eggs throughout their life. Abstaining from vaginal penile sex will prevent individuals from an unintended pregnancy. And from contracting any STIs. So abstaining from vaginal penile sex will prevent individuals from an unintended pregnancy, that's true. But and from contracting any STIs.
So I guess it's false, yeah, it is a trick question cuz you can still get things in your mouth.
Yeah, boy.
Oh, yeah, mouth anal everywhere, so yeah, fall.
Okay. Um, three, correct and consistent, look, hopefully we get it right kinda trick question cuz they been messing with. Correct and consistent use of condom or the diaphragm greatly reduces the risk of contracting a STI. True. But a diaphragm, no. Right. Yeah, I'm gonna say false. Cuz that diaphragm, you could catch a STI. Okay, four, orgasm could help to aid in bringing on labor in the third trimester of pregnancy. This term refers to the onset of a woman's first menstrual period. And a pause of dysmenorrhea. Yes. This term refers to an end of a woman's fertility, what is that? Yeah.
Which question are we on?
We are on seven. Ready?
Yes.
A visible skeleton on X-rays, the formation of head and body hair. Sucking of body movements and the development of eyelashes, eyebrows and translucent skin. Occur during which trimester of pregnancy?
Second.
First, second and third, right, or such development. After the baby been delivered, okay, no. Eight. I need my water. Um, miscarriage, what is miscarriage? A delivery prior to thirty-seven weeks, spontaneous abortion prior to twenty weeks. An abnormality present at birth or a Zego implant outside the uterus.
The last. Spontaneous abortion prior to twenty weeks of gestation.
Okay, we're gonna go with the third one, I mean, yeah, that's the third one. Um, preterm birth, what is that?
Delivery prior to thirty-seven weeks.
Okay, delivery prior to thirty-seven weeks, ectopic pregnancy.
Zego implants outside the uterus.
Yes, also known as a um tubal pregnancy, right? Alright, eleven, blank is a severe depression in women who have recently given birth, what is that? Twelve, which of the following is an example of birth control method? Birth control pill, Nuverine, Juco Rivera, all the above. Yes. Um, thirteen, research indicates that women who use blank likely to have more blank satisfying birthing experiences. Than women who use blank. Gynecologists. Midwives and. Obstetricians, right, so. Women who use midwives are likely to have more satisfying birthing experiences than women who use obstetricians. Okay, fourteen, a primary factor that plays a role in eleven of sexual satisfaction of a couple is. The abstinence of children and fidelity, interpersonal problems in relationship or none of the above.
Interpersonal relationships and interpersonal problems in a relationship.
Yeah, I think so. What y'all think?
Yep.
Yeah, cuz if you got problems going on, it's, it can carry over into sexual experience. Unless sometime it be so good, we just avoid it.
But still. Interfere. Stop it altogether.
Right, you right. You right. Fifteen, tubal ligation, vasectomy, intrauterine devices are all considered. Reversible forms of birth control.
True.
I'm gonna go with true. I don't know what they consider, but I do know that tubal ligation can be reversible. Okay, so that, so um, the success rate isn't like high in the eighties or nineties, but it. Um, we're gonna find out if it's considered a reversible form. We're gonna hit submit. Let's check these answers, one, false. Two, false. Three, false. Four, true. Five, monarchy. Six, menopause. Seven, second. Eight, spontaneous abortion. Um, nine, a delivery prior to thirty-seven weeks. Ten, see, somebody know they stuff, y'all doing an awesome job, I love it. Ten, uh, a Zego implant, that's the first one, okay? Eleven, postpartum depression. Twelve, we said all of the above. Thirteen, midwives and obstetricians. Fourteen, interpersonal problems in a relationship. And fifteen, we got it wrong, y'all, they said it's not. Not considered a reversible form.
I said false, yeah.
So. I'm, I'm biased then because um. I was gonna say, my, my mom had remarried, she had us, right? Got her tubes tied, divorced, remarried, had another set of children and she had another three.
The thing is that it's not considered birth control per se, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, they have to find another medical diagnosis to really do it. Which is why some hospitals don't do it, like if you go to a Catholic hospital, they're not gonna do it for that sole intention. It would have to be medically necessary. That's just my thought on why it wouldn't be considered like a method of birth control.
But is a vasectomy reversible?
It's reversible, can you take the IUD out?
That's the easiest one.
I don't know.
Um, oh, I was muted. Um, do y'all know if we got live love win tonight?
Not sure.
Okay. I wanna go to bed. I do want to, uh, maybe I'll just go live in the morning, I wanna share with you all the pelvic floor therapy. I don't know how many of you all have heard of it. I've been trying to share my experience, but um, I've gone to through two appointments so far and I just wanna share my journey with everybody.
Are you doing a physical therapy?
Yeah, I'm doing a physical therapy.
I never went.
Yes, I mean, I said, oh my god, you're like the, the, the best kept secret from women.
Yeah, I never went to my appointment.
Yeah, um. I was still trying to figure out though why I made it to six children and never heard of it to, to last one, you know?
A lot of people don't discuss it though, it's like a taboo topic.
What is it again?
So what's the therapy?
Say it again? So, okay, pelvic floor therapy is what you get um anytime your. Um, so your pelvic floor muscles is the core, like you know how you have your pelvic bones, right? And, and, and it's like you got these muscles that sit like this, it's like a bowl of muscles. And um, through anything from having excessive weight to childbearing. You can put some strain or pressure on those muscles. The thing is, is down here where my fingers are clasped together, those muscles sit right where your, your vaginal. Um, opening area is and your anal, so that whole perennial area, all of that. So you got your outer organs, but your, your, your bowl of muscles is your core, okay? To, to, to those particular organs and then you have like your uterus and your bladder and all that, it sits inside. And so what happens is, um, as women, we might have children, but then we have things like, um, a little uterine leakage. We don't consider it completely incontinent or anything like that. But you know that thing where you cough or laugh and you pee a little bit on yourself and you just deal with it. Um, uh, well pelvic floor therapy can help you because sometimes just doing a Kegel. Um, exercise um is not enough. It depends on how much repair you need. It depends on if your muscles are, are really loose or are they really tight. So, um, you have to go and get a plan that's specific for you and to help you um. Work out, but you're working out your pelvic floor, but it's gonna help so much. Um, so I just, I just, you know, I, I want, I want people to know, one, to not be afraid to go. Or um, if they have a problem and they don't know that there's something that they can do about it. Um, that, that they should explore. And if you don't, if your doctor or your physician hasn't recommended or picked up on the need for it, then ask.
Say, cuz a lot of the doctors don't even, you know, based on the patient, we, I mean, I've learned at an early age, you don't lie to your doctor, your lawyer and one other person. But if you, you know, if you're not transparent with your doctor. Um, my doctor that delivered my twins is like my best friend, like I can go to him and be like, I did this under. Um, but when I told him, I didn't know that they had a specialist on their site. But they do ask, and you know, we talk openly, but a lot of women don't discuss it cuz even like with my girlfriends. They didn't come forth with the information until I did. And I told them about my experience and then they was like, oh my gosh, me too, and this ain't the part.
Yeah.
Women, yeah, of a certain age with a certain number, and my bladder been messed up since baby number one, he was ten pounds. So, yeah, it's unfortunate, but.
I, I got diagnosed with uterine prolapse after my, it was the second or third child. They never suggested pelvic floor therapy. I mean, I went through and it was like, okay, how are you doing, you not having any problems at that time? Maybe cuz I was just younger, I didn't have any, I didn't have any leakage, I wasn't hurting, I didn't. I didn't physically experience anything that, that supported the fact that. They, they knew that my uteran uterus was, was dropping, okay? Um, so I was thinking like, well, y'all got in my church, y'all know it's been hanging down, like. Yeah, I wanted to try to support it five years ago, six years ago, but, um. You know, I'm, I'm happy now that um I am done having children. And so that's even better that we're repairing it and I don't have to worry about um. Hand it up again.
Yeah. I just, um, and the exercises, they actually help your stomach too cuz it's, it's working your whole core. But I just never, when she gave me some medicine and I was supposed to do a series of exercises. And I was thinking about it as we were reading as I was like, I haven't even visited the doctor, but um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna record and I'm gonna share cuz I'm sure there's other women that's like, yeah, I need to go ahead and do that. It, it was a good thing, so I'm going once awake. And um, she, she, you know, does an assessment each time. I was able to find out like the, the range in motion in my left hip is like. It's, my body is like overcompensating because it's trying to, it's trying to work its way through. And I'm like, wow, I didn't even realize it, I mean, I do yoga and I realize I'm imbalanced, but. No, I didn't know until she gave me certain exercises to do and I was like, oh my goodness. Um, and, and then she, she's giving me exercises, I didn't even realize that. I wasn't able to use my lower abdominal muscle so much because even if you're doing an exercise that's supposed to use your lower abdominal muscles. Your body is gonna use something else to do the exercise, is gonna use the upper and your thighs and anything else. So you may not know that you're not really contracting the muscle that you should be using. Um, Kegels, I knew for a long time that I couldn't do Kegels, so like, you know how you're supposed to do like pulsing patterns, like hold, let go. Man, I do a hold and that's it, it just, they're in no control over how many seconds I can hold for is just, and that's it. And so, um. So Kegels aren't everything and my, my, my specific thing is, is my muscles stay tight, so they never loosen up. So that they can tighten up when they're supposed to, they just stay tight. And so they're not helpful like that. And um, just to know and to understand and then she's giving you exercises to do on your own as well as in the office. I mean, it's like win-win.
You didn't have to take any oral medication.
So far, no, um, she said that I was very, very close to that point where recovery is minimal. Um, so she's like on a scale of one to five, she's like you're at a two, but I see people come back from a two. Uh, where one, they would need um, a little bit more. And probably if I just kept waiting, I, I would, I would be at that point. Cuz I did start to experience more um, uh, discomforts than I did years ago. So I've had the problem for a long time, but I'm just now starting to experience the problems enough to go, you know?
Do something.
Do something about it. Hey, what's going on with this? And they're like, oh yeah, we got something for that.
Yep.
So I am very, very, very happy and um. Yep, I'll be sharing. I wanna thank you all for helping, I know we only got a couple more classes. I do wanna ask, um, because we just did a recent um kit sale that, um. Maybe I can get one of, one or two of you to kinda commit to help and keep up with the chat. Um, because guess what? They're gonna need to know how to sign on, how to find a YouTube channel. When are the classes, all that good stuff, right? And if you all could help me with just posting the answers or helping to guide people cuz I don't want anyone left behind. Um, and it'll just be a good overlap and support system for anybody else that, that tries to jump on board. They might not be on the same units as we are, but they could get in and start watching the videos. So. Uh, if you have time, just let me know via, you know, via the chat or something like that and it's not, not, no, no biggie. If you're a person that's able to hop on here and there and all you would be doing is kinda redirecting the answering people so they don't get in there and it's like, hello, anybody? How do I?
Yeah, I'll try as often as I can, but I'm not, I just happened to glance down at my phone when I saw somebody say something about the class cuz I was literally. Cuz I had dropped my spaghetti, all of the spaghetti and I had to quickly come up. So I just happened to look, but whenever I can cuz I'm hardly in, there's so many groups.
Yeah, whenever you can, that, that's fine for me, that's all I ask, I don't want anyone to think that it's, it's just specifically for me to answer. If it's something that I have extra insight on and I see it, I'll respond. But anybody could um, pretty much copy and paste and put, put that YouTube link back in there again or. Help direct somebody to getting started, I don't want anyone to think like, oh, I know somebody was doing it, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, I'm letting you know it's open, help everybody out. Yeah, and um, just, you know, you guys are doing wonderful, I'm trying to make it through the next few. I'd, um, I'm having trouble with my little one at night with sleeping and, and when we start his bedtime and he is like, I don't wanna go to sleep. So I'm having a hard time with the little babysitter part. So that's where I'm, I'm gonna need a little support here. So that's where I'm I'm gonna need a little support here too, and plus, when we have a next session. We're gonna need somebody to um help head it up, I'm thinking that we could probably find different people that um. Might resonate well with certain units and we could just have it broken up. Um so if you have a unit that you like, I'm thinking for the next go around. That we have um some, we have it broken up where no one has to figure out a commitment for all um seven classes. Um that, you know, you could take a class, and of course you'd be supported, but. And we're reading and we're studying and we're doing the quiz questions, I could share with you the um. The answers and um the PDF, if I get you all's email. I can send you a PDF copy of all fourteen units. Um one of our ladies put it in a PDF form. Um so you can have, copy it and make a booklet. And so, um you know, we can all. Make sure that we don't leave any other sisters behind. Alright, any questions, ladies? It's been wonderful. Alright.
Thank you all.